It's a little after four, so I'll call the town council meeting of Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two to order. And the first order of business is the invocation of the pledge.
All right, let us pray. Please, God, let us use our minds in a way to help the town move forward and for good weather and for health of everyone in our town.
Amen.
Amen.
Carrie, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Okay, we've got a special this morning, or this afternoon, we've got an oath of office for Heather Earhart being sworn in, so why don't you stand up, we'll do it right here in front of the...
Do I have to memorize something?
Yeah, you're gonna repeat after me.
Okay.
Okay, and you'll say, "I, Heather Earhart..."
I, Heather Earhart.
"...do swear that I will support..."
"Do swear that I will support..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"...that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance..."
"And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance..."
"...to the state of Maryland..."
"To the state of Maryland."
"...and support, support the Constitution and laws thereof..."
"And support the Constitution and laws thereof."
"...that I will to the best of my skill and judgment."
"And that I will to the best of my skill and judgment."
"...diligently and faithfully..."
"Diligently and faithfully."
"...without partiality or prejudice..."
"Without partiality or prejudice."
"...execute the office of council member..."
"Execute the office of council member."
"...according to the Constitution..."
"According to the Constitution..."
"...and laws of this state."
"And laws of this state."
Congratulations.
Yay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, friends.
Welcome. And we need you to sign the oath of office, and I'll witness it.
I like that you guys got coordinating outfits.
I know. He dressed me. He dressed me last year. And I wouldn't even wear it on Saturday for the parade. I said, "I'll wait until I'm official."
Yes.
Okay, signed, and you are official.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Press.
Thank you, Nick.
Oh, there's Nick. That's the voice.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on here, everyone should have received a copy of last month's minutes. Any comments, questions?
I move to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and Heather, since you weren't here, you would...
Yep, I didn't say a word.
Yep. Okay, Angie, treasurer's report, please.
Yes, thank you. Our audit started two weeks ago and coming back to finish it up next week. So we should be getting our final financial statements in fact of the end of October, and then he will be here at the November meeting to present the audit. And the only other information that I had was our short-term interest rate had increased a lot, so when you look at your report, there's a lot of interest income, and I had to check the bank, and they said it was good, so it gone up tremendously.
Oh, that's well, income does, okay, good.
Nice.
Good.
Great.
Okay.
But if you have any questions for me?
Any comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the planning department, Mike.
Good afternoon, members. So the planning commission did not have a meeting on September nineteenth, and currently we have no items on the agenda for October seventeenth. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. All right, moving on, everyone should have received the police report, we have Corporal Brazil with us. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the premise checks that you're doing around town. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, good, no problems at all, that's good to hear, so. Any comments for Corporal Brazil?
Just echo the mayor, the premise checks, I like that, so your presence is out there, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. And moving on to the town administrator's report, LaShelle.
Okay, I think we're right on time, I'll just give a little background, and then we'll have the public hearing at four fifteen. So we're almost there. So we have two ordinances that we advertise the public hearing for today, we introduced them at last month's meeting, which was ordinance number two eleven for the development impact fees, and ordinance number two twelve late fees for delinquent utility accounts. So I'll just do a quick review, and then we can have the public hearing, and then once we come back out of the public hearing, you all can take action at this meeting if you so choose. So this ordinance was introduced at the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting, and was advertised in the County Times on September twenty-second, and we've had it posted on the town website. The town currently charges an impact fee for water sewer and the county's Board of Ed- Board of Education fee. The water and sewer fees are directly tied to and reserved for paying for growth-related projects. These fees are assessed when projects are added to the town water or sewer system and do not have previous allocations. This increase that we're recommending follows the awarding of the contract to expand the wastewater treatment plant from the current capacity of point six eight million gallons per day to one million gallons per day, which we issued the contract at last month's meeting. The total cost of the expansion is eighteen million sixty-six thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars. However, one million dollars of that cost is to flood-proof the existing plant, which is a benefit to all users of the system, not just the new users. And so we did not include that million dollars in calculating this impact fee increase. We anticipate getting nine hundred and ninety-two additional EDUs that will be gained from the expansion for future projects. So the new fee we calculated at eighteen thousand dollars would be charged to any project that has not been allocated sewer capacity prior to its effective date of the ordinance, which would be twenty days if you vote on it today, which would be October thirty-first. Previous, our previous impact fee increase for sewer was in January two thousand and seven for the E and R upgrade. And again, the reason we collect the impact fee is specifically for growth-related projects, so the cost of these expansion and growth-related infrastructure is not passed on to the current residents using the facilities. So it's strictly paid for by the growth-related projects. The second ordinance, two twelve, is for late fees for delinquent utility accounts. This ordinance was also introduced at the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting. The public hearing was advertised in the County Times on September twenty-second, and also has been posted on the town website. As described in the memo that we attached in your packet, it is a very lengthy, multi-contact effort that we put into any late utility bills prior to shutting off a utility. It's very labor-intensive, and for the last twenty-two-plus years, we have been charging twenty-five dollars. I would remind you that we bill in arrears, the previous quarter is already passed, you get your utility bill, and we don't do shut-offs until the end of that next quarter. So it's two whole quarters. And as described in the memo in your packet, we had about two hundred late notices this last period. They received phone calls, they received emails, late notices in the mail, and then when it gets whittled down to right before the shut-off, they actually get personal phone calls also are tried to be made. So we make every effort to try and reach out to the customer before shutting them off. Then, once they go on the shut-off list, a staff member has to go off, shut off the utility, and then go back out once it's paid and shut it back, turn it back on. So it's very costly, and I would remind you also that in FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, we did not increase our utility fees as far as your monthly charges. We kept them steady all three years, so that is really offsetting. This late charge increase is really strictly for the people who are not able to pay their payments, and it, and we have not increased anything with our utility billing for the rest of the residents the last three years. And we also, if there is a hardship, we do work with the customer, make a payment plan. I think that we are more than fair, and in looking at what other utilities are charging, this is even seventy-five dollars that we're proposing that it goes to is very, much lower than any other utility around us. So that's kind of an overview, if you want to go ahead and go into the public hearing and see if we have anybody.
Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing and open the, the, the open meeting, yeah.
All right, so I move to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. Just kind of go over what LaShelle said, again, this, well, as far as the impact fee.
Do we have to vote? Oh.
Oh, vote to close, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry about that.
Thank you. As far as the impact fee goes, you know, this, this is simply for new growth.
Right.
You know, we have not raised property taxes since I've been mayor for ten years now, so just want to make sure people do understand that if we didn't do it, we would have to charge everyone, so we don't want to do that, so that's why it is increasing simply the impact fees. So is it, did we receive any comments?
We did not receive anything.
Okay, anyone here today would like to comment on either the ordinance number twenty-one, two eleven, impact fees, or the two twelve late fee for the delinquent, delinquent utility accounts? Okay, hearing no comments, we can go ahead and open the regular meeting and close the public hearing. All in favor?
Do we need to make a...
Oh, make a motion.
Okay, so I move to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so again, we introduced this ordinance last month, the first one, we'll take these one at a time. The development impact fees would be to raise the current impact fee for sewer to eighteen thousand from the current thirteen thousand that we have had in place since two thousand and seven. And we, we do an EDU report that tracks our allocations, and as of the effective date of this ordinance, anything that had not been allocated previously would start paying this impact fee increase.
Oh, Christie, since you're with county, can you, do you know what the county's impact fees are for water and sewer?
You're putting me on the spot. I, we have, ours are separated out a little differently, it's different for residential and commercial. And I kind of guess, and no, you're fine, I can look it up, but you, I think total, the total of a water and sewer commercial EDU, I think, is very close to what our to- what our totals, which is, is... Will lead eighteen plus three. No, yeah, it's very close to, to about the same.
Mm-hmm, and then with these big plant upgrades, I mean, there's not a whole lot.
We increased the water last year, or the year before, I think it was two thousand nineteen, in anticipation for the water tower that we are going to be constructing. So, you know, I think we've done a good job over the years sticking to this policy and making sure that we are collecting the fees and paying for the infrastructure with the new growth. And additionally, I would add that what we've done always is, since two thousand, is we have developer agreements for any of the large developments that they agree to a certain number of EDUs that they will pay for each year, so we have a consistent income, so even if they don't sell enough houses that year, they will purchase, it's usually thirty, thirty-five EDUs per year for development. Right now, we're collecting from Clark's Rest and Meadows One, we'll be adding Meadows Two onto that. So we have enough impact fees that we are guaranteed to, to know that we're going to be able to pay our debt service with that. Any questions?
Any other comments, questions?
I just think as far as the late fees for the utility counts, I think seventy-five is very reasonable on that, and our staffs also were very accommodating to the town residents, so I think, I think seventy-five dollars is very reasonable.
And we understand it's, it's a tough economy right now, and people are hurting. However, I think the utility bill staying constant for the last three years is, is more important, and not that this isn't an impact to people, but we will work with them, and I think we have a responsibility also to try and cover the, the staff time that is put into it as well.
About how many do we have every quarter, about?
Start off, like, maybe ten.
Okay.
Um, but, um, like I said, we start at like two hundred late notices go out, and then we just kind of keep rolling it down.
Great, well, that's good, I mean, that shows that you guys work with everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, LaShelle, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in between the two, now I'm going back to the other on the impact fees. When Rodney was here at the last meeting, and I think you just said it again just a few minutes ago, how does that work for Meadows Two, like, when he starts that, is he going to be paying the new one, or...
So that he's been allocated the first seventy-five for phase one.
Okay, that's right.
So he would pay the old fee, but anything going forward, the rest of the development is going to be at the new fee, eighteen thousand. And all of their water impact fees are at the higher rate, which is, was passed in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Are there any other developers that are in that, kind of, going to be doing a little bit of both?
Like that window, yeah.
Or is that the only one?
No, that's the only one.
Okay.
LaShelle, how do the EDUs work for the apartments? How are those counted?
Um, it's point seven five for one and two-bedroom apartments, and then for three-bedroom apartments, it's one full EDU.
Okay, thank you.
So the seventy-five that we agreed a few meetings ago to allocate for the phase one will cover the one apartment building.
Okay.
And the rest of the development they're doing in phase one.
Okay.
Okay.
So like I said, let's take action just on the ordinance two eleven first.
Number two eleven, right.
Which is the impact fee.
Care to make a motion?
I can do it.
Okay.
I move to approve ordinance number two eleven, chapter sixty-two, development impact fees, to increase the impact fee from thirteen thousand to eighteen thousand per EDU.
I'll second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, and then the second ordinance, number two twelve, is the late fees for delinquent utility accounts. Again, we covered all of that, so if you have any questions on that one specifically.
I move to approve ordinance number two one two, late fees for delinquent utility accounts.
I'll second. Sorry, you can give it to Nick, that's fine.
Now I can.
Okay, motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to pass the ordinance as amiss, first you mention. Okay, my next item is ordinance number two thirteen, is just an introduction. This is for the Code of Ethics for the Town of Lenartown. The state of Maryland has notified us that they are making modi- required modifications to the ethics ordinance across the state. Our town attorney has prepared ordinance number two thirteen to meet those requirements, and has also submitted it to the ethics board for approval at the same time. So by the time we vote on this next month and hold a public hearing, we'll, we'll know that it has been approved by the ethics board for Maryland and meets all the required requirements. So if you go through the ordinance in your packet, anything bolded and underlined is new, and then there are strikeouts for what's being changed. So it's really adding additional requirements each year. We have, we have our own ethics board, and each elected official, as well as myself, we have to complete the packet that talks about any conflicts that you may have, or any investments you have, that sort of thing. And, and then the board meets and reviews those, and they have to get submitted to the state. You don't submit the, the actual pa- you just submit a report saying that everyone has reviewed them on the ethics commission. So we're introducing this ordinance number two thirteen. We will be advertising the public hearing for next month, and it also will be on the website for people to review if they want to take a look at it.
And just again, this is required by the state of Maryland, so.
The next item is a liquor license letter of support for the expansion at Bruder Garden at Shepherd's Old Field. The Bruder Garden is on the liquor board agenda for this month to extend the premises of their Class D license to the approved expansion of their kitchen and second-story service area. The planning commission approved the expansion project at their June twenty-first, twenty-two meeting, and there were drawings in there showing that it's a small bump out of the, of the kitchen, but there will be service area on the second floor, so they need to be, which they already have, but this is expanding it. And this would be a, just a liquor license letter of support for the liquor board to expand the current license.
Any comments, questions?
Is it, it's a two-floor addition, or...
Yes.
Mm-hmm, got it.
They have a little second story kind of up on the bar, yeah, so it kind of bumps out that toward Barkley Street.
Okay.
It, the drawing just, it's a little hand drawing, but it's two stories.
So, so the bump out is the first and second story?
Yes.
Okay, coming up.
It's just that little tiny.
All right.
Are they adding restrooms? Is that the question? No?
Not, not in this. Restrooms were in this one.
Not in this, they, they added restroom in the back of the building. Oh, in this part?
In this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So it's under area of new construction.
I can't keep up with the... This is on the other side, right? This, this isn't where that Smash Burger, the old Botanic is, is it?
It's right adjacent to Parkville Road and Street.
Okay.
Yeah, where the kitchen is now for proof, it's just far more...
It's out toward North Main. Okay. I did pay attention to our planning inside.
The extra bathroom would be nice.
And they added one, I think, on the other end too, when they did the team.
They won't have to use that, they can keep the Shepherds, I guess, closed then.
Right.
Because then they'll have bathrooms within the facility.
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right, I move to approve a liquor license letter of support for Bruder Garden LLC's request to expand their Class D license into the new kitchen and second-story addition at their current location at two two seven two five Duke Street.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Favors? Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is the Rex expansion liquor license letter of support. The Rex is completing renovations to the existing theater space in their building, and they are requesting a liquor license letter of support to expand their existing Class D license into that space. They are also on the agenda for this month.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Yeah.
So is it going to be theater space, what, what are we, what are you... Joey, what can you talk about?
Oh, Joey, here?
Yeah, he's hiding in the...
The current plan is to do events and, you know, concerts, they'll be able to be rented out for weddings, parties for base, or whatever else.
That's great, that's awesome.
All right, I move to approve a liquor license letter of support for the Rex's request for the extension of the premise of their existing Class D license.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any additional comments, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is an easement that has been requested on a ten and a fifteen-foot pathway that the town owns to access our sewer line that goes across Breton Bay Drive, properties along Breton Bay Drive. In December of twenty fourteen, Mr. Alex Delude purchased the property at two two five 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 Breton Bay Drive. There was an old pier on the property when he purchased the home. When he went to sell the property recently, it was discovered that the pier was actually built at the, the base of a ten-foot path that the town, was deeded to the town in the nineteen eighties. And there is also a fifteen-foot path that goes across the north part of his property, which is behind his house, and there's a shed, and part of his driveway is within that fifteen-foot path. A recent survey that's included in your pa- packet shows the pathways. To resolve this issue, the town attorney has been working with staff to give an easement to Mr. Delude to be able to use his property, as he has been since twenty fourteen. Excuse me. But it would preserve our ownership of the property and access to our sewer line if we ever need access to that sewer line. So the buyer, the current buyer, the seller, Mr. Practice here is the next-door neighbor, and the realtor has reviewed it, our attorney has, was, has written the easement, and the seller, Mr. Delude, is actually going to pay the attorney fees, but our attorney did prepare it, and it makes sure that we do still have access to our sewer line, we will still own the ten-foot and the fifteen-foot path. We're just giving an ac- an access easement to the pier on the ten-foot path, and also taking away any liability that the town has for the pier, and all the responsibility for any repairs to the pier is that of Mr. Delude or any owner after him. And then the fifteen-foot path granting him access to continue to use his shed and driveway, but we would still, again, own, own the property still as we have since the eighties. And I think that's, oh, he does have a requirement in here that if the property sells, we do have to be notified so that we can track the easement and who has access to it. Any questions? I think, Mr. Practice, you're comfortable with this now, Patrick?
Yes, thanks to everybody's help, the mayor's, yours, the survey, and I can, we're okay. As we understand this, and correct me if I'm mistaken, so it's essentially just allowing continued access to that area and all the impact beyond the liability structure. There's no restrictions on that property other than allowing that access.
It would stay like it is, has been for many years. If we own the property, it's not a public-use property, and it just allows them to continue to use their, their pier and their shed and driveway, and that they have all the responsibility for it, and we don't have the responsibility for that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yep.
And the attorney did confirm we don't have to worry about the pier?
Correct, it, it's all...
It's all covered in that number, you don't think?
Yes, and I did email him after the workshop and made sure he was comfortable with it, that everything is covered, and he feels very comfortable with it. And everyone else is satisfied as well, so that's a win for everybody, I think. I mean, it's unfortunate, and, and as a government entity, we cannot give away property, so, and unless we can show that it is not used, and we don't have a use for it anymore, and we cannot show that because, who knows, someday we may have to access the sewer line. So we all, we continue to have the ownership, but he can continue to use the property as he has been, so.
And there's no public access to it?
Just for this part.
Right.
So will, does the easement cover the whole, the whole, our whole piece of property covered?
Yes.
Okay, so it wasn't, not just a little portion of it?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
It's an easement to use that whole ten-foot path or that fifteen-foot path.
Okay, got it.
Now, the fifteen-foot path extends past his property, so he has access to the portion that is adjacent to his property.
Perfect.
That's what I was going to ask, so that technically runs behind both of those homes, right?
Correct.
So it's Breton Bay Drive to, what is it, Camelier?
Camelier.
Okay.
But he has access just to the part that's adjacent to his property.
Behind, okay, yep.
Any questions?
All right, I move to approve an easement for the property owner at two two five 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 Breton Bay Drive to utilize the ten-foot and fifteen-foot paths adjacent to the property.
I'll second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The last item on the agenda is for Clark's Rest subdivision. Phase three, four, and four A water sewer and storm drain has been completed and inspected and is ready for acceptance into the town system. And then, once we accept that into a... And then once we accept that into our town system, there is a two-year maintenance bond period. We've already taken over one, two, and two A. And the, so the only thing we'll have left, we've al- already taken the roads over in those three as well. Um, so the only thing outstanding that we have bonds on is the roads in three, four, and four A.
This, this doesn't have any pump stations. That was all on an earlier phase.
There is one in phase three, but we already took that over previously. And actually, that was two years ago. We took it over. Um, last week, I released the maintenance bond on that, so the two-year maintenance bond was up and we hadn't had any problems with it.
Good, good.
Okay, comments, questions?
I'm going to accept the water sewer and storm drain system. In Clark's Rest Phase Three, Four, and Four A to the town system and transfer to A two-year maintenance bond.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, just a couple of little updates. We are working very hard on Eltown Alley. The, it's looking so good. Um, the North End Gallery, two murals are going to be installed this week on Thursday and Friday. Uh, we are scheduling a ribbon cutting for those murals on November the third. I think it's going to be around two o'clock. Um, I'll be sending out invitations on that and advertising that. Um, we do have some state officials from the Maryland State Arts Council and the Arts and Entertainment Districts. Um, who gave twenty-five thousand dollars toward that particular mural. Um, they're going to be in town, so we thought that was a good day to have the, uh, ribbon cutting as well. North End Gallery has a board meeting that day, so a lot of their board members will be in town as well. Um, so we hope, uh, everyone can join us for that. Uh, we should be wrapping up most of the construction in the alley within the next couple of weeks. Um, paving is going to be the first of next week. And, um, so we look forward to that. It's turning out really, really, really nice. And, um, we had a meet, a meeting last week with, um, the marketing committee and LBA board. Looking at next year, uh, events that we would, um, scheduling of events for next year and the types of events. And we had a lot of discussion of how that alley would be used and it's certainly not meant to take away from the square. But to enhance the user's experience for all the parking that's back there, if you're walking through there. Um, we could have small events back there and we hope to really focus with arts-related events and small, um, you know, demonstrations and that sort of thing. So, um, we, you know, have more improvements we want to make to it, but the, the ba- basic infrastructure and, um, the three, um, mural locations will be all complete. Hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Awesome.
There's a lot of work. Any questions on any other projects or? Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, moving on to my report. Uh, Joe, anything going on with the LBA?
Um, the main focus of late has been just the events. Uh, like the show said, we, we remember the marketing committee. And we are tone up with the plan for the year for all the different things we're doing and scratching some and building new ones. Oh, very exciting. There's, there's a lot of good ideas and a lot of things that make people go like. As long as, as well as spreading the wealth and getting things, you know, all the way out towards the winery. And the new Eltown Alley, which is a great, uh, addition to town. And, um, focusing some of the events on retail as well. And doing an open call to our business association itself for anybody who wants energy or resources put towards what they do in Lenertown. So really trying to talk to everybody and we have a lot of momentum. The bar crawl was another big success. We have the Reagan years. This weekend will be, uh, we're going to, uh, award to Jimmy Hayden for his sponsorship. Um, at the concert and we have a check for Clementine Cuties for some money we raised, so. A lot of momentum, a lot of good things going on and again, trying to get everybody involved and on the same page.
Yep. Good. And, uh, actually, I'm a member of Rotary. We, we meet here on Thursday mornings and I've asked to. We're going to have a mi- quick meeting, then go and go over and tour, uh, the Rex and the new theater. And we're actually doing it for, uh, uh, Marie Nash, also going to take Rotary over and so they can see that. Yeah, so we'll probably look at doing other things like that also, so get people out, so. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and move to council reports, events. Um, I know, I know, I was going to say. Actually, Joe, why don't you talk about this past weekend, all the events that took place?
Well, we had good weather. That's the greatest event you can have.
Yep.
And, uh, we filled up the town with the bar crawl and everybody had different flavors of German entrees and beers. And then we had a nice little parade with a dog contest where Michelle and I were some of the judges.
They were cute.
They were.
Well, it's hard.
It was a very busy weekend in town.
I know our, uh, daughter and son-in-law and the kids, they've rode the trolley out to the winery, then downtown and then of course back to Clark's Rest where they live.
Yeah, we actually heard from some customers that it was a thing, it's actually a thing, that they came to town to ride the trolley with their kids.
Yeah, 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 they, you see, seen pictures of that, yeah.
That's cool. And they didn't even know the parade was going on. And they ended up watching the parade, but that was their thing for the weekend. They're coming to town to ride the trolley, so.
Yep.
And that's pretty cool to hear.
Yep.
I have a nephew that comes like, uh, multiple times every weekend to ride it. He loves it. The kids love it, we do.
Okay, uh, Nick, community development and planning?
I don't want me to do this.
Oh, I, I, oh, okay, I'm sorry. We're going to go back to events. I, I thought you were saying you didn't.
Really? Oh, okay. I know, I'm.
She's ready.
Okay, all right, let's go.
She's got it. I have some news.
Okay.
Well, Jay and I had the opportunity to walk in the parade on Saturday. Um, so that was pretty cool and it seems like everybody wants to bring that back again, so next year. Um, yeah, and saw you guys walking past the Rex. Uh, the Brew Garden was pretty happening and packed there Saturday. And then I finished up luckily at the Rex, which was really nice. And they said that it was pretty much the whole day, just up and down, so. And what'd you say, Jay, Friday? There was like no parking to be found in Lenertown.
Friday was packed. It was, it was a good evening in Lenertown, that's for sure.
Yeah, and the Port of Lenertown looked really hot. So the next big thing is right, the Reagan years you mentioned. And then also on the twenty-second, the Port of Lenertown, Beetlejuice, 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 um, will be shown and now it can have a lot of fun, kids activities. Um, lastly, another thing you keep on the radar is the Veterans Day Parade, the show confirmed. A nine forty-five kickoff time for folks to see the parade, so hopefully everybody can get out. It's right, the biggest Veterans Day parade in all of America.
Correct.
I did it.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Now, Nick, Nick, community development and planning?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, I really don't have too much to report on. We had twelve permits and eight you knowings come through last month. Um, as Joe mentioned, yeah, this past weekend was, uh, just a blast in town. Uh, especially wanted to mention to anyone, if you haven't been in town yet, please, uh, be sure to check out all scarecrows. There's over sixty entries. Um, it seems every day there's more that I haven't seen yet, but it's really neat. There's some amazing entries or good breaks out. And I think people are really enjoying it. Uh, Friday night was actually in town and I saw just so many people going out and taking pictures and stuff, so it's really neat. So I hope everybody enjoys it. Um, and I think that's actually all I have, so thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Christie?
Um, I don't really have any update. The, um, Route wa- Route Five widening is continuing. It looks like they're working on the. Yeah, they're getting there. I mean, there's, it's nice to see the sidewalk and everything going on. Um, and I think they're doing a fairly good job of keeping everything moving along as much as they can. Uh, but just make sure everybody drives safely and, and slowly through there.
Just, um, I'll, I'll make a comment on that. Uh, you know, we get comments on the construction comparing it to the, the new nice bridge that's going up. Well, coming back from Virginia, I had to sit in that line over there for half an hour the other day, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's a mess that way too. We were in Virginia this weekend for a wedding. Yeah, they're moving along, so it's good to see that hopefully wrapping up, um, sooner than later. And then I don't, that's all I, all I have.
Okay. Southern Maryland Municipal Association, Jenny?
All right, Mayor, thank you. So I attended along with, uh, Mayor Burris and LaShaw were there at the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference in Annapolis. So it was a great turnout. So it was a total of three hundred and eight registered, which was, I was pretty impressed with for the fall conference. And they said with speakers and exhibitors, it was three hundred and forty. So that was a pretty good turnout. And then yesterday evening in Annapolis, we had a very nice, uh, send-off for Scott Hancock, who is twenty-seven years of service, so. He did a great job. He'll be missed in that role. I've really enjoyed working with him since, uh, I forget when I started, like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, but it's, uh, it's been good, so. Wish him the best. Um, as far as our Southern Maryland Municipal Association, uh, Southern Maryland Chapter meeting. Um, our goal was to have one at the conference. That did not work out, so North Beach is trying to find a place to hopefully soon host one. So I just don't know when yet, so I'll keep everyone updated on that.
And the, the new director of, um.
Teresa Coons, yes.
Teresa.
Yeah. Yeah, so she was actually at our first meeting on Sunday, so she's, uh, she's very engaged. She's ready to, uh, to kick it off, so.
She was director of Southern Maryland, um, Realtors Association, so we do have a, uh, in with her.
Yeah, so she's, uh, I guess her first meeting with us will be our, we have a retreat coming up in, uh, the Inner Harbor. It's the first time I think we've done the Inner Harbor. That's in December second, so she'll be there. Um, what else did I have here? Just to echo what Nick said about the scarecrows, I'm really impressed with that this year. The engagement and the amount of people, they puts a lot of work in those. They look really good, so I really appreciate everyone that participated in that. And just to echo again what LaShaw said, El, Eltown Alley looks great. I cannot wait to see that done, so.
Two lights were lit up this weekend, so the rest, we're waiting for the, the tops, the lighting, uh, looms for the rest of the lights, but.
Yeah.
And then the paving next week is going to look fabulous, the murals.
It, it's actually, it's full and perfect because I parked in that back parking lot Friday night and just to walk that way, it's, uh, it's, it's just perfect.
Lighting and open.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mayor, business development and retention?
Uh, and I'm also going to start on with the scarecrows. I love seeing the small businesses that are represented. And I walked around the other night and just kind of looked and I was like, all these different businesses that came out of the woodwork. I was trying to come up with a, you know, Blanche scarecrow for next year, so we'll see if we can get my, my little one-eyed dog out there, you know? In some form. I actually had a vision. I said I'll have like a pile of ash, cause smoking's bad for scarecrows, right? So, we can ash with a cigar. Um, and, uh, I think today was Amazon Prime Day, which is.
And tomorrow.
And tomorrow, okay. Which is a great reminder to everybody that, um, you need to shop local for these small businesses. If we keep buying things on Amazon, the small businesses are not going to survive. If the small businesses don't survive, then we don't have Lenertown. Then we don't have people that are going to be able to sponsor the, the baseball teams and the drama club and everything else local. So, you know, really encourage you guys, there's a lot of great things out there. There's a new clothing store that's just opened up in Hotel. Uh, you know, over there at Marie and Nash, there's some great places to do local shopping. So even though Amazon's coming up and there's good deals and they're offering those, that prime shipping. Remember, if you buy there, you're not supporting local business. So please, please think of Lenertown when you're doing your Christmas shopping. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, and one, one other thing is the, uh, the old Bank of America building, that is up for bids now. I think December seventh is the deadline for bids, so had some calls on that already, so people are interested, so.
That's great.
Yep. Okay, anybody have anything else? If not, I would entertain a, uh, move to adjourn.
A move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.